I'd like to call the order, I'd like to call the order, the committee, the whole meeting of Tuesday, January the 19th. Are there any modifications to the agenda? I don't see any. Okay, seeing none, can I get a member of council to move the agenda? Thank you, councillor Hendricks.
Whoa, thank you.
All in favor?
Buttons.
Buttons, if you got them. Thumbs up for councillor Barnhart.
Smoking if you got them.
That carries unanimously, which brings us to, just before we get going, I would like to recognize that we are pleased to be here today on the traditional territory of Treaty Six. We acknowledge all those who share a deep connection with this land. The city of Beaumont respects the histories, languages, and cultures of all of Canada's first peoples, whether they be of First Nation, Métis, or Inuit descent, and appreciates that their presence continues to enrich Canada's vibrant communities. We are all Treaty people. So on tonight's agenda, we have one public item, item three A, council remuneration review, and then we have two items in closed session. So without further ado, we will go straight to item three A, council remuneration review. I believe Ms. Winter will introduce, and then a consultant's got a presentation. It's also has a presentation.
Due to the committee and the members of the public, in accordance with the council policy, elected officials' remuneration requires a mandatory review. Elected official salaries must be undertaken every three years. For this review, we engaged Ed Gross, senior consultant from HR Outlook. Mr. Gross is here this evening to go over the details with the committee, and I'd like to introduce Mr. Gross and get started.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gross. Floor is yours.
Hello, hello. Good evening, everyone.
Evening.
Good to be here. Just want to check my sound. I think I hear some, some feedback loop going on here.
Yeah, there seems to be a bit. I'm gonna go put myself on mute, and hopefully that solves a lot of it, because I think everybody else is.
Yeah, sometimes that can happen. Yeah. So can everyone hear me okay then? All right. Okay, well, I'll get started here. Again, thank you for allowing me to come and make a presentation this evening. I have about 20 minutes, so I'm going to be very focused and, and very succinct. And so I do have a presentation to share as well, and I know everyone received the report in advance, so I'll go through the sections very quickly so that there's time for some questions. And so let me just get to share my presentation here. And again, I just check, can everyone see that, the beginning of a presentation? Yes, okay, I see some thumbs up. All right, well, let's get started. So my name is Ed Gross from Red Deer. I own a business called HR Outlook, and over the years, I've assisted a lot of municipalities in compensation reviews, mostly employee compensation reviews, but I've also done a number of council remuneration reviews, and including some of the municipalities in your surrounding area there, the town of Devon, Morenville, Watasklin, and just most recently, the city of Red Deer. So tonight, I'm going to, to talk to you a little bit about this agenda here, some of the background as to how we got going on this, how we got involved, a little bit of explanation of how we do market reviews, and some statistic information, and then to take a look at the actual results, and, and then to open up a conversation or discussion around what's next. So that's the plan for the presentation here. So looking at the background, first of all, as was already mentioned, this is a requirement under your policy for council remuneration that an independent review be conducted, and this is not uncommon in a lot of remuneration policies, that the, the current council would look at, at reviewing council remuneration for the next council. So usually, it's a year or the year of an election. So that's the purpose of why we started this project, and so the project was basically two phases. The first one was project planning. And in this phase, we made some decisions as to who would be part of the, the council remuneration comparator group, what sort of things we would look at, the different models to, to compare the data. And then the second phase was then to collect the data and analyze and report on it. And so we're at the reporting and presentation stage. So there are kind of two main methods that, that typically are used in council remuneration. The first method is, is around policy rate reviews. So councils will embed in policy what the rate is for mayor, deputy mayor, councillors, and then also some other data or remuneration policies around per diems or allowances, that sort of thing, and also participation in benefit plans. And so that is kind of a policy review. The second review that is, that we often conduct are kind of actual rates. And this is looking at audited financial statements that are posted every year, and under municipal affairs, the, this is a declaration of the, of the salaries and benefits and allowances for council members, and that is, that is available for the public. And so we look at the annual rates, the audited financial statements as well. So in this particular review, I've looked at both, and so you have the results in, in the report. So the, the next area that I'd like to cover is just in terms of doing market reviews. We typically take the data and do a statistical analysis, and so you may be familiar with this from, you know, Statistics 101, the classic bell curve, and what that represents is when you line up all of the council salary rates, say for councillors or for mayors, they go from the lowest to the highest rates. And so the, the bottom there in the basic is the lowest rates, and the top is the highest rate. The number in the middle is called the median, or the 50th percentile. This is important later on, when I get into the reports, for us to understand that it's the middle number. That means 50% of the numbers are above, and 50% of the numbers are below. And most municipalities that have a salary philosophy, they typically talk in terms of percentiles. Sorry about that. So percentiles. So the median is a, is a common target. There also can be targets around the 75th percentile, which is a more competitive market position. So that means 25% of the salary rates are above, and 75% are below. And basically, the, the salary compensation targets fit in between the median and the 75th percentile. There's very few municipalities that go above the 75th, and there are basically no municipalities that go, go below the median. Typically, you'd look at targeting somewhere in the middle to the 75th percentile. Now, I always like to kind of add the bell curve to, to an actual example. And so it starts off with a range of pay rates. You see that first line there, that range of pay rates. And behind the formula for percentiles, what it does is it organizes those pay rates from the lowest to the highest. Okay, and then finds the middle number again, which is the median. And I typically call this a comparable rate, a comparable market position. And so you see in this example, 56,000, 240, 425 is the actual median. And then you may also choose other percentiles, you know, if you want to be a bit above target. Some of the municipalities I work with will target the 60th, or the 65th, or the 70th percentile in the marketplace, so that every time they do a market review, they have an idea as to what, what, where they want to fit as far as their salary philosophy. So that's just a little background as we get into the results, so we have a better understanding of kind of what I'm talking about when I talk about percentiles. So let's start looking at the results. And so first of all, I want to speak a little bit about the comparators that were chosen. And so the city of Beaumont has not established a set group of comparators for council remuneration. So my question and analysis of this is to take a look at, at a population range, and this is typically what municipalities do, of municipalities that compares closely to them in terms of size. And so chose the, the range of 15,000 to 30,000 population size. And so these are the comparators that, that were selected for the review. There are some other, kind of other municipalities that are kind of in your region. They, they're typically higher population base, like Leduc and Sherwood Park, not Sherwood Park, Spruce Grove. They're around the 33,000, 35,000, which compared to Beaumont is around, you know, 70, 72, 75% higher than Beaumont's population. So I just looked at 15,000 to 30,000 as far as a good comparable range. The other thing that we had to pay attention to when we compared the data is those municipalities with full-time mayors versus part-time mayors. And so some of the smaller municipalities in that range, we compared that data differently than those municipalities with full-time mayors. And so that, that's something that you'll see in the reports as well. So first of all, the first method is looking at policy results. And so we see here the, the actual policy results. So going into the different, different municipalities here, we see two of them. It's not highlighted really well, but the city of Camrose and the town of Stony Plain are municipalities with part-time mayor. So that definitely impacts the, the salary for mayor and for council. And so comparing all of those, all of those comparators, including the part-time ones, if we look at, let me see if I can just get a little bit of a highlighter here. So looking at all the comparators, so if we look at mayor, the 25th percentile, the 50th, the median, the 75th, and then the max, you see that the median for this all comparator group is 95,000. And how that compares with Beaumont's rate is it's the 85th percentile. So on that, that range, we would fit in the 85th. So we're a little bit above the, the competitive range. And that goes for council members as well, when we compare all the municipalities and the salary honorarium. The next one is where we just compare full-time mayors. And so you see that when the full-time mayors, the median goes up, and so our percentile ranking goes down. So it's the, where we fit on the 80th percentile. So once we take out the, the part-time mayors and, and part-time mayor municipalities, our comparison with the remaining full-time mayors, our, our percentile ranking goes down. However, you still see that we're still in the competitive range as far as policy rates. And I always add, you know, if we were to target the median, there would be a slight reduction in, in those compensation rates. So that's first of all, the, the policy rates. So then we get into the actual audited financial statements. And so in this analysis, we get to see all of the municipalities, and how they're divided up in the financial statements is salary honorarium and benefits and allowances. So we see Cochrane here, salary honorarium, benefits and allowances. And so the benefits and allowances may include all of those taxable benefits that are paid for on behalf of the municipality, and then any other kind of payment allowances that are provided to, to the mayor and to the councillors. And so you see in, in this case, there's quite a variation, and some of that has to do, like with the city of Camrose, where the mayor and council have very few benefits. If we look at, at Beaumont, I had to do some adjustments there, because in our reporting on the financial statements, the benefits and salary have been grouped together, and the allowances have been separated. And so what I needed to do is take the pension amount that is in, reported in the salary and benefit section, I had to take that out, and also the mayor's payment for being a voluntary firefighter. And so those amounts wouldn't be part of the mayor's actual remuneration. So I, I adjusted that, so that's why in the reports you see an adjusted salary. So looking a little deeper into this, of course, we need to get into, I'll just this. So if we look at all the comparators, including the part-time comparators, we see that, following here, we see that in total remuneration, that's the salary and the benefits and allowances, in the mayor's, with the adjusted salary rate, still fits into kind of the 100th percentile, the, the highest factor. Council shows lower than the median, 42.8%. And that is largely due, or primarily due to the benefits, and I'll talk about that in a moment as we work down, down the screen here. So when we look at just the salary component of mayor and council, you see that we rank in the 71.4 percentile. So we're a higher than, than the median, we're kind of getting into that competitive rate for salary and honorarium only. When we look at the benefits, and this is where kind of the story continues as far as total remuneration, the mayor still fits into the higher percentile, because there are benefits and allowances that the mayor has under, under policy. Although council, because there are very few benefits for council, whereas some of our comparators, council are eligible and are paid for some of their benefits, so we compare lower in the benefit ranges for, for councillors. So that is all comparators. So everyone in, including the part-time mayors and mayor municipalities. So let's look at the full-time mayor. So again, with just the full-time mayors, the mayor still compares in the highest, the 100th percentile, as far as comparison total remuneration, and council is lowers because of that benefits component of total remuneration at the 20th percentile. For salary and honorarium, this is where, just for that component, council and mayor both fit into the 60th percentile. So that's just slightly above the middle, and, and so is in kind of between mid comparable and competitive. And then finally, we see again, you know, with council benefits, because of councillors you know, not having the, kind of the full benefit programs, this, this impacts the comparison around the benefit part. So salary is, you know, fine, that 60th percentile, it's the benefit part that, that could be looked at. The other thing in terms of the mayor benefits, that is something that, you know, we've had a conversation about in terms of what actually should be included under that benefit component, because any other kind of expenses or other type of purchases for the mayor perhaps should not be recorded in the benefit and allowances. So we're still kind of working out under municipal affairs, what is actually required to be reported under that, that benefit section. Just like the, the firefighting honorarium, that, that always would need to be separated out for the true picture of the mayor's salary. So what's next? So this is a kind of reviewing the results and kind of the, the story. And as far as policy goes, that any recommendations or any changes or targeting would go to the budget committee for consideration. And finally, in terms of policy review, there are some municipalities that clearly state where they want to target in the marketplace. They also may state who their comparators are, and, and, you know, and, and having that built right into policy. So then there's no question when, when the policy is reviewed or remuneration is reviewed, as to where that municipality would like to target in the marketplace. So with that, I will stop sharing so that we have some time for, for questions, and we'll go from there.
No, I really do appreciate the presentation and going through the results. It was a, it was a pretty, pretty good document and a pretty comprehensive report, and so thank you for that. So just to keep on council's radar, what we're sort of gonna do here, we will have, we'll ask the consultants some questions, and then there'll be an opportunity for council to discuss any modifications to policies, things if they want, if we want to make those changes. Or if we're happy with the status quo, we just accept it for information and move on to the next agenda item. But at this point, I will open it up to questions from members of council or our consultant, and I see councillor Danlock.
Thank you, worship. Thank you, Mr. Gross, for your presentation. I have had some experience in my current workforce about these kind of reviews, and it's very good information. My thoughts, I have two questions, Mayor Stewart, I'll just ask two right now, I've got more, but my other council has some, my first two questions, my first one is, if this report is going to be published to the public, my concern is the way it's laid out in terms of, if you will, on, on method number one, it talks about Mayor Stewart's salary being 100,000 right now. If you look at method two, it goes up to 116. Now, I understand methodology of it, but I'm worried that people may focus on the fact that they're thinking Mayor Stewart's being paid 122,000 dollars a year when he's not, and they'll focus on that, and that'll make him a target of unfair criticism. I'm concerned that information is, is one thing, but sometimes the way it's laid out, it kind of gives the impression that he's gonna be making 122,000, and he's not. And that kind of concerns me from a visual perspective, being how it's going to be a public document. This was a private employer, only senior management would see it, the rank and file employees don't see it. It's a different kind of scenario. So if you can understand where I'm coming from with that, I want to have Mayor Stewart the target of unwarranted criticism, because it does, some people can say he's making 122,000 a year, and he's not. That's my first question, if I could, please. Thank you.
Yeah, that, that is a good question in terms of how, how it is laid out. And, and one of the things that I noticed in terms of comparing the audited financial statements, the city of Beaumont has adopted a practice in the past of reporting the salary and benefits under one column, and the allowances under another column. All the other municipalities report salary as a separate column from benefits and allowances. And so that, that would be one recommendation right away, to really, to really focus on how the audited financial statements are reporting the salary and the benefits and allowances. That's two separate columns. The other thing, oh, I'm getting some feedback here. The other item is in terms of the firefighter salary or firefighter honorarium under the mayor's salary, I have a question, and that, that will need to be reviewed as to where that should be reported, or if that should be reported under the mayor's salary at all. I adjusted it out for comparison, but in terms of the audited financial statements, it shows under the mayor's salary and, and benefits. So I, I believe that needs to be addressed.
Is Mr. Dalloran or Ms. Winter want to talk to that?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I know Mr. Dalloran can kind of jump into as well. With regards to the reporting for the 2020 audited financial, finance is going to be reporting these numbers differently than the way that they have been reported, so they'll be out and be separated, and so the mayor's salary and the mayor's honorarium for the, the fire would be separated. With regards to councillor Danlock's concerns, we could definitely strip those numbers down and actually post the actual numbers that are within there, that wouldn't include those that could be posted on our website.
Mr. Dalloran, any comments or no?
Nothing really too much different than what Ms. Winter just mentioned, you know, I think on the financial statements, it's, it's a matter of making sure it's clear that it would be the compensation associated with the mayor as an elected official, not as a volunteer, and so we'll endeavor to make sure that clarity is provided in the 2020 statements.
Sorry, Perry, you got a question on that?
Yes, and just, just to tell you that since we've gone in and out of split screens, I've lost my hand, and I've lost my little green voting guy, so it's gone, it's off my screen, so I'm without. I just wanted just to know also with the reporting, it used to be that we would also report our expenses, and I have not issued an expense claim in two terms, and it was always one of my sources of pride when it was in the paper, expenses Hendricks zero. I don't know if that reporting continues, but that's the way we used to, and I know we have a cumulative amount, and I know that some of that, I believe, should be applied against the, the overall remuneration piece, because not all of us are, are expending all of our expenses. So just wanted to, wanted to point that out for, for Mr. Dalloran.
Fair enough. Coming back to Billy, you had a second question?
Just a quick comment, then I'll launch into my question. So I, I would like to see if we could, this report maybe tweak to show us, for example, on the meth, method two, it says salary honorarium 116,490. What is that 16,490 comprised of? Again, if this document were to be public as is, it raises some questions. I think the answers are there somewhere, but they're not easily seen. So as an observation, having that 16,490 broken down would be appreciated. My second question has to revolve around the eight municipalities involved in this, in this review. Six of the eight have full-time mayors. I thought only four had, but actually six, which I was happy to see. My question revolves around, in this comparison of comparables with benefits, allowance, and so on, do the other six municipalities, or five who have full-time mayors, do they have a severance arrangement for their mayors? For example, we started our term with Mayor Stewart as being a part-time mayor, evolved into a full-time. So the question is, should Mayor Stewart, and take this, don't take this the wrong way, John, when I say this, but looking out for your best interest, in my opinion, should he run for reelection, and his employer, the people of Beaumont, technically don't support him, and he doesn't get reelected? He's been severed in the traditional employer, or employer relationship. So do the six other comparables, do they have a severance policy for their full-time mayor at the election time? I'm curious about that, because it is relevant to Mayor Stewart's situation and future mayors forward in our new environment here. So has your report addressed, or are you aware of the other municipalities having a severance arrangement for their full-time mayor? Thank you.
Very good question, and being an election year, that question has come up to me a few times. In the policy review of our comparators, I have not seen any allowance for transition allowance or severance, or anything like that in, in our comparator group. I just completed a review for the city of Red Deer and, and their 12 comparators. And within that group, and I, I'm sorry, I do not remember which one it is, but there was only one municipality that had any type of, of transition, you know, severance for, for either council or for mayor. And, and that one was based on, on years of continuous council service. But it's, it's not very common, because only one out of the 12, like for the city of Red Deer report.
Thank you. I'll, I'll yield the floor to Mr. Stewart for other questions down the road. I reserve right to come back and ask questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Van Newkirk, followed by Counselor Barnhart.
Yeah, thank you. Just to the presenter, Mr. Gross there. A couple of times you alluded to the fact that our mayor is volunteer firefighter, and thank you for your service, Mayor. I've always admired that about you. Where does that, where does those numbers come into play here? And how how come you mentioned it? We're doing a, we're doing a salary review for elected officials. How come we're talking about a firefighter allowance here? Can you clear that for me?
Yes, and that is a good question, and I went through that very quickly. So on our audited financial statements for the city of Beaumont, it shows the salary component as trying to find the the exact number. But it a hundred sixteen thousand four hundred ninety is is that salary benefits. Out of that, the pension component, because the mayor is under the local authorities pension plan. So there is a benefit there. And the firefighting honorarium was included in that amount as well. So I have taken those out, I've taken out the honorarium for firefighter completely for the analysis. And I've moved the pension amount to the benefits and allowances so that I could properly compare with the other municipalities. So that resulting adjusted salary in in the report you see there for the actual twenty nineteen results is the mayor's salary ninety-nine thousand five hundred eighty-four. So in the comparison, the volunteer firefighting is not part of any of the comparison. And the pension amount was moved to the benefit amount so that we had the pure salary, so that I could compare salary with salary.
So in the numbers presented in method two, actual rate review, there are no compensated dollars in any of those three amounts, one sixteen ninety-nine or twenty-two that deal with anything firefighter related?
Correct. So the adjusted amount a hundred sixteen thousand is reduced to ninety-nine thousand.
Reduced for?
For firefighter and the pension amount moved to benefits. Firefighter is not included in the one twenty-two at all.
Okay, so the reason this is, the reason this feels messy to me is because you're looking at audited financials. And is that right?
That's correct.
Yeah, and and I think Ms. Winter and Mr. Dollar explained that that'll be a little more clear moving forward. So that's good. But, you know, similar to the train of thought that Counselor Danilock had, you know, the the numbers do confuse the reader a bit. You know, it took this discussion here for me to wrap my head around what that adjusted salary meant. So anyhow, it's bad that 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 math ended up in here. But, you know, if it's part of your process, then that's the way it goes. So thank you.
Well, and and that's why I do like to look at the audited financial statements because that is posted every year on municipal affairs and on all the municipality websites. It's a requirement to post the audited financial statements. So anyone in the public can look at that statement and look at what that salary and benefits are and make some decisions as to what that's included. But there are no notes on the audited financial statements to to identify that, oh, my, there's a component of that of that, that's the volunteer firefighting component. So so in the future, yeah, I I expect that, you know, we'll take a look at those reports next year and the years after. And and so it'll be very clear what is the mayor's actual salary.
Is there a comment before I go back to Counselor Van Newkirk for follow-up?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to go back on to Counselor Van Newkirk. So the reason that those numbers were included is because when we're looking at those audited financial statements, they do include the honorarium for the for the volunteering. And so because of that being on a financial audited statement, that's why we stripped the number out. And as I had mentioned earlier, yes, moving forward for the twenty twenty, we would be looking at actually separating that out of the salary portion for for the mayor moving forward to to make the remuneration and the the reporting a little bit more clear.
And don't think I don't appreciate that because it puts it high.
Yeah, nothing further, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, no follow-up from Counselor Van Newkirk. Counselor Barnhart?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Gross. My question is about the the comparators. And when I was going through this in preparation for the meeting, I was surprised to see the city of Lloydminster there. And I wonder if you could just comment why we are using only the Alberta population when it's a full-time mayor? Doesn't the mayor cover the thirty thousand people, thirty-two thousand in Lloydminster?
As as far as municipal affairs population survey, Lloydminster fits in under the under the thirty thousand.
Well, you have it as nineteen thousand and it's actually thirty-two thousand. You know, I I maybe that's just something that I would say in a comparator, I don't think that's, unless there's something I'm missing, I don't think that belongs in the comparator. And that is a high, that that puts us at the highest then, if you take that one out.
Yeah, if we take that one out, our, where we rank with the other comparators would actually go up. We would be higher than than eighty percent.
I realize that, but I I think you might, I would just suggest that I don't think that's a fair comparator.
Yeah, I just went strictly with the municipal affairs population numbers, you know, as the guide for for that range.
Yeah, what I understand is they're taking the Saskatchewan population and they're not including it.
Okay.
Lloydminster divided in half.
Right, right.
Roughly, so I I would just say that one comparator through me, and I would say it's probably not a good one to have in there. But that's just my opinion. I have another question, and that's about the LAPP pension. So is most of the benefit package that is included here for the the mayor, most of those dollars, that that's the LAPP, is it not?
Yes, definitely that that is a an amount that is added to the benefits and allowances. And that amounts, I think I have the exact amount in my report.
Ninety-nine hundred according, nine nine thousand nine hundred and sixty, according to page eight of the report.
Right, right. So that that amount is is probably reporting higher than the other comparables, the other comparators. Most of the other ones that have retirement savings programs, they're not local authorities pension plans. They are matching RSP contributions. And so they range, you know, from around three percent. And so definitely with with the local authorities pension plan, it is it is a is a more competitive benefit. And it's similar to the, well, it is the the benefit plan for pensions for employees.
And I I wonder if you know this number. In in terms of personnel benefits for the city employees, city of Beaumont employees, do we use a budgeted amount like eighteen percent or twenty-two percent or something like that for an estimate of benefits, which which takes into account insurance, life insurance, health insurance, all of that? Do you happen to know what that is for all city staff or maybe Mr. Dollar or Ms. Winter might know? Just wonder how this compares to that.
Counselor Barnhart, for all city staff, I think it would, I'm I'm not exactly sure of the exact number. Typically, it ranges anywhere between fifteen to twenty percent in terms of your percentage of your salary that would be benefit related. A lot of it depends on some of the options you select, single versus family and that kind of thing. But obviously pension being a big part of it or the biggest part of it. But typically, yeah, would be in that, you know, fifteen to to twenty percent, possibly as high as as that.
Okay, yeah, I I think Counselor Danilock already asked for kind of a breakdown of what's in the benefits. And I I would agree, I think that's needed. Thank you.
See no further, no further questions? Is there any discussion points and next steps that council wishes to undertake? Counselor Margot Swain?
Yeah, I just, thanks, committee chair, I guess. I wanted to pick up on on Counsel Hendricks' point around the council expenses piece. I thought that that's an important point. And while the the number shows up there, I I think that would be an interesting thing to to put up online somewhere or in the paper, as he mentioned. So I didn't want that point to go lost, I guess. So I don't know if that needs direction or anything like that, but I I'll be interested in in that conversation around posting the the actuals of of council expenses. I think the public, I I know I've certainly been asked about it and can give my answer, but I think it'd be good to have a central place for.
Thank you, Mayor. Currently, right now Legislative Services is actually combining all of those reports and actually going through right now to be able to post those expenses for the council term here coming up. So I'm hoping to be able to have that completed by the end of February.
Thank you. It was a little bit quiet, but I think I caught what you're saying. In short, you're doing it, you're going to look at it, and you'll post it.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you, and thanks, Perry.
Okay, so seeing no further requests to speak, can I get a motion to accept the report as information? Counselor Danilock?
To move your worship. Thank you.
All in discussion on the motion? All in favor? See Perry's hand? And that carries unanimously. Appreciate that from members of council. Um, thank you very much, Mr. Gross, for your for your time tonight. It was, like I say, it was a comprehensive report. It was really well done, really appreciate the time and effort that we used that. Thank you, Ms. Winter. Thank you for putting that together. Appreciate it. Um, next on the, I need a motion to go into closed session so that we can hit items four and B.
So long.
Member council, Counselor Danilock willing to make that motion? Discussion on the motion? All right, seeing none, all in favor? Or counsel, that carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Appreciate the discussion that we just had in the closed session. We do have a couple more items to just wrap up our agenda, but I don't think they're too time consuming. Counselor requires item five, do members of council have quick questions for administration this evening? Counselor, oh, can we clear that? It's, I think we're still recording some votes here or some polls. Can we clear it and do, okay? If everybody, anybody's got a quick question, want to throw it up again, that'd be great. Counselor Barnhart?
I was just turning the pages in my book. Thank you. Um, just the communique came out this week, and I really love signals. And I can't find it in my in my book here, but oh. And I I I love what's going on with the rinks, and I think Mike Schwartz, CEO, has has shared a lot of information about that, and and it's great. Then I was surprised on the bottom of the communique, it said bundle up and stay inside. After we've been doing all of this work about getting out on the rinks and stuff. And it just, it was a message I didn't think we were sending. I don't think we want people to stay inside. I think we want to be safe, but you can be outside. I just was wondering, maybe it may be for Mr. Berzowski to just clarify where where we're going with that.
That was part of the the campaign that we've been working on. Yeah, there there is a little bit of a disconnect there with, we are encouraging people to go out and be safe, but as much as possible as well to to limit their outings.
So you maintain that's the message we should be sending?
That that message will be changing.
I respectfully, but thank you for that. Appreciate the communique. I love seeing it. Definitely gets my attention.
Counselor Hendricks?
I worship a couple of things. One is the icons that I was looking for that would, missing have reappeared under reactions. If you go to the reaction button, my lower hand and yes and no's are there now. So I'll I'll use that moving forward. On just a simple matter, on the utility bills, it it, you know, offers up certain payment options, including dropping your check off at the town office. And it says, you know, you can use it at the, you know, there used to be a Dropbox. So now that we have a new aluminum door, apparently the Dropbox is gone. So it hurts for some people that have gone there to try to drop it off. I don't, I haven't checked it out myself. Is that the case?
Oh, there is a mailbox out there.
We have a Dropbox.
Dropbox there?
Stainless steel sitting to the right. It's not the same style as the last one, but it is there. There is a mailbox there.
May may not have, may not have looked for what they're supposed to be looking for. So thank you. I'll I'll pass that along. There's just a comment, a question, I just on the ditch cleaning around premium RV, just an update, any word on that? How did it go?
Yes, I wasn't prepared for that question. Let me, I'll have to find out and get back to you.
Okay, no, thank you. That's good. And then, no, I was just going to throw out the spring planning discussion, but I'm sure it's coming to us at some point. So thank you.
All right, seeing no further questions. We don't have any information items, and there are no emerging issues to discuss. And so once again, thanks council tonight for your, for the great discussions that we've had and appreciate it. And we will consider the meeting adjourned, and we will pick this back up at a regular council meeting next week. So thank you very much for coming in tonight.